...with a touch of allegiance, we already had that with our special meeting. And so we'll go on to what we call...
Councilmember Flores? Okay, Councilmember Freeman?
So, we're doing a roll call, Councilman Freeman.
Okay, they're both here. Hold on.
It will start again.
Yes, I am.
Okay. And Councilmember Flores? Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Mayor Edge?
Here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll go on to our ceremonial items and swearing in of council members and city clerk. So, I'd like to read the resolution first.
It's right at the agenda. It's a two. So why don't we put the flag along here?
Yeah. That's right after the agenda, huh?
Okay, good. All right, I got it. So, Resolution number 2020 XX. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Juan Batista declaring the results of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Whereas by the Resolution number 2020-22 adopted at a regular meeting of the San Juan Batista City Council on May 19th, 2020, this council have called and set the 2020 general municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election to be held the same day on the November 3rd, 2020. And whereas by Resolution number 2020-22, this council placed on municipal election ballot the election of two members of the city council to succeed those members' terms in. And whereas by Resolution number 2020-22, this council placed on the municipal election ballot the election of city clerk to succeed the clerk whose term ends. And whereas by Resolution number 2020-22, this council placed on the municipal election ballot the election of city treasurer to succeed the treasurer whose term ends. And whereas, city has received this council as reviewed the official election results compiled by the county of San Juan Batista. Partly attached here too. And whereas this is the time and place for the council to meet and proceed to declare the results of the 2020 general municipal election. Now therefore, the city council of the City of San Juan Batista can hear our results as follows. Section 1, the candidates for the two available council seats and the number of votes cast for those candidates are as follows. Friel's vote count 1, 531, percentage 32.5 percent. Freeman, vote count 465, percentage 28.06. Jackie Morrisopoulos, vote count 450, 27.16 percent. How Nicole M. Franco, vote count 211, 12.73 percentage. Sorry, public comment?
Oh, there's a second, there's a back page, Mary. Section 2? Page 2?
What, page 2?
Oh, the resolution. The resolution is two pages.
Well, I've only got one page. Oh, I'm sorry. Got rid of that. Okay, section 2, on the basis of official vote count set out in section 1, this council declares Scott Friel's and John Freeman elected to full four-year terms on the San Juan Batista City Council. Section 3, the write-ins candidate for a city clerk and the number of votes and for that candidate are as follows. Shawna Friel's, vote count 36, percentage 100 percent. Section 4, on the basis of official vote count set out in section 3, this council declares Shawna Friel's elected to the office of city clerk of the City of San Juan Batista to a full four-year term. Section 5, there were no candidates running for the office of city treasurer of the City of San Juan Batista. The forward point resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the San Juan Batista City Council held on the 15th day of December, 2025, and following votes.
So, we'll need a motion.
We need a motion, Mary?
Yes, we need a motion, I said, we need a motion.
I'll need a motion.
I'll just like to add. Okay, thank you. We have roll call vote.
Yes. Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the mayor passes unanimously, and that's Resolution 67.
Six, seven?
Six, seven.
Six, seven. Okay, so do we have any public comment? I guess we don't?
I don't see anything in chats, and I see no answers.
Okay, so is there any council comments?
Well, I do. Okay, I want to especially thank Shirley Brewer outgoing...
She's not following the script.
Hey Shirley, how you doing? Just checking in. I have no comment. Welcome.
She's not following the script. The mayor's not following the script.
Scott, welcome. We heard John back.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd like to echo that comment also. Welcome, all of you. And Shirley, we wish you well, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Oh.
I have something also to add, same reason.
Oh, go ahead, Asad.
I'd like to take this time to thank Dan De Vries for all the time and effort he put in helping out the city. He's still up, he's here, so he's still going to be involved. Thank you, Dan. I really appreciate all the work that you do, even though I don't agree with you sometimes, but we need to work together very deep. Thank you.
So, Mayor, do you have the agenda with the presentation of plaques on the back page? We have a 2A and there's 4B.
I do.
And then 2B was...
I'm following.
Yeah, so basically, I'm sorry, I think I got it all wrong. That was my bad.
Yeah, no, it's, I'm following what is said here. And so it says that we need a motion for the resolution.
Right.
And we've done that.
Yep.
And then...
Okay.
Wait a minute, Mary.
I think we did the roll call vote.
Right, we did, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mary.
Now, on to item, we go on to item 2B, which is a presentation of plaques. Being outgoing of...
Mary, Mary, hold on a second. You guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I just wanted to respond to my good friend say sorry.
Oh.
Something, thank you. Those seven say sorry. I appreciate it very much, buddy.
Okay.
2B.
All right, so we go to the presentations of plaques. So, outgoing commissioner, Scott Friel's.
So, this is our plaque for chat.
Yeah, plaque, and it says, "The city of history San Juan Batista presented to Scott Friel..."
Plaque thing doesn't work.
"...in great full appreciation for dedicated service to the citizens of San Juan Batista." Historic Resource Board, Plan Commission, January 2017 to December 2021.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to go ahead and do presentations, and then we can all have something to say after. So, the next one is for the City of San Juan Batista, presented to Shirley Brewer with sincere grateful appreciation for dedicated service to the citizens of San Juan Batista. Historic Resource Board, Plan Commission, June 2018, December 2020. Next is the City of History San Juan Batista, presented to city clerk Laura Stent with sincere and grateful appreciation for dedicated service to the citizens of San Juan Batista, December 2018, 2018, November 2020.
Thank you.
And last but not least, the City of San Juan Batista, presented to Dan De Vries with sincere and grateful appreciation for dedicated service to the citizens of San Juan Batista, serving on various boards and commissions over the past 30 years, and as a member of the city council, December 2016 through November 2020. Well, thank you all of you for your dedication, some of you are staying on and some of you aren't. But we appreciate your hard work, and as Councilman Ford has said, we don't always agree, but we consider you friends. Councilman De Vries, we have known each other for many, many years. And so just want you to know that I appreciate all that you've done in the past. And Shirley, I've never really gotten a chance to know you real well, but we have visited for just briefly. And Scott, welcome. Welcome to the city council, and thank you for being on the Plan Commission and Resource Board. I hope I gave you many, many out. So, any other comments? Oh, Laura, I'm so sorry. Laura, thank you so much, and it was so nice working with you, and we all know what we've done in helping you, helping me with the computer and my difficulties with the technology.
All right, thank you, Mary. So...
Can I say something, Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Kids did my honor to get to know everybody and to get to know Dawn, and I agree with you, Laura, this was an absolute guts, and I'm a tech zero. So, it really makes dad very helpful, very thank you. And Dan, you're going to be sort of guest on the city council. Congratulations to Scott and to John. And John, thank you so much for even nominating me to be on the Plan Commission and Historic Resource Board. This is wonderful, and making it in the future when our life settles down a little bit, I would like to perhaps give thanks on that and get my name back to the gate. Thank you so much. Thank you, Shirley.
I'd like to say a little couple of words here, Mary. Basically to Shirley, thank you Shirley for your service. When you and I talked four years ago, I believe it was, or whenever, I knew that the Plan Commission of being good hands with you all and that we know you have experience, and you have like temperament, and you can take any rough of me and like work with everybody, so be part of your service.
Absolutely, thanks, John.
Oh, any other council members? Oh, and...
Er, anything? Thank you so much. For all your work and your dedication, I still appreciate everything that you've done, and that's amazing work. I appreciate it, thank you. Scott, you as well, thanks for everything on the Plan Commission and on the Historic Resource Board. I appreciate, happily appreciate it on the bar, appreciate it as a member of the opportunity to help serve this as well. Thank you very much. Laura, thank you so much for putting up with us for the last years. It's been tough sometimes, but I appreciate all that you have done. But Dan, you will be sort of guest on these meetings. Thank you for everything, and I'm sure we'll chat soon.
Thanks, Leslie.
Okay, so do we have any final comments from our board members and the city council?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, Mary.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to say that I gave up my seat on the county planning commission with the Supermatricello in order to come back to San Juan Batista to correct some things, which I thought would go in a bad way, would be wrong. And it wasn't willingly, but I did that. I didn't want to go back to San Juan Batista. I enjoyed my position at the council very well, but I saw things happening here in San Juan Batista that could not be redressed without me coming back, and I did. I came back home, so to speak. Ran for and got elected by this city council, and I feel like I accomplished everything I wanted to accomplish when I came back to San Juan Batista. But the work still continues, and we work to continue with that work. I'm proud of the accomplishments that I made in the 40 years that I was here in the San Juan U.S. Plastics Mayor, and a couple of other things, but I'm really looking forward to working with all of you this session. I hope I can continue with that discussion going forward. That's hugely important to this community that I love, that I lived in for 30 years. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future, and I'm thankful and appreciative of the time that I've spent with you so far.
Thank you. So, anyone else?
Mary, if I could, please?
Yes, your word, Scott.
So, four years on the Plan Commission was extremely challenging. Everybody knows we have a lot of things we need to take care of and clean up and catch up. I want to thank Dawn and David and Todd Kennedy for all the work they did. And I was extremely lucky to chair the Plan Commission for two years with the incredible team that was on the Plan Commission. We had a great relationship, all of us, and it was rewarding, very rewarding. And now I'm looking forward to even tougher stuff, I guess. So, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Back to Freeman, by the way.
Asad.
Welcome, Scott. Just want to give you a big hello, how are you doing? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We do have a lot of work.
So, do we have any other comments?
Turn it on, Mary.
The city manager? Any comments?
No, it's been a privilege to get to know you all in the last 18 months. You're all very dedicated. I think all of you portray the incredible volunteer efforts that have made this city what it is from 150 years ago to the present day. So, we rely on this commitment to our community to keep our community healthy and moving forward. So, thank you, everyone. Appreciate that.
Quick one, I forgot to say one word to one of our incoming new council. John, I'm glad you came back. You give us... All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Caesar.
Good. So now we can go on to item 2C, installation of newly elected city council members. John Freeman and Scott Friel's, and our new city clerk Shawna Friel's. And I think we may have our outgoing city clerk give the oath of the box, right?
And that's what I would ask you to do, to give the oath to Shawna. And I'm a little unsure, am I also doing Mr. Freeman?
Yes. Yes, and once Shawna is sworn in, she's going to swear her husband.
Okay. So, I would like to start with incoming councilmember Freeman. If you, it's my honor to administer the oath to you, if you would please repeat after me, where I state my name, please state your own name, and if you would please raise your right hand. I, Lawrence Stent.
I, John Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Laura.
Go, Asad. Sorry, Shawna Friel's second.
So, it's my pleasure, Shawna, to swear you in as the city clerk of the City of San Juan Batista. And if you would please repeat after me, and where I say my name, if you please say your own name, if you raise your right hand. I, Lawrence Stent.
I, Shawna Friel's.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Laura.
And at this time, city clerk Reed Hill is going to swear in. Incoming councilman, Scott Friel.
Please measure again. I, St. William...
I, Scott Friel.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support and defend...
To support and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Good. Very nice. That was very special. So now we go on to item 2B. Selection of mayor. So, we can deal with the nominations, and I would like to begin with nominating Leslie Jordan for mayor.
One second now. There you go.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Public comment first?
No.
We don't have a public comment?
No, there's no public comment. No, no, he didn't.
So, Councilmember Flores?
Are we going to have roll call vote?
Oh, I'm going to do this.
Oh.
Sorry.
Here we go. Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Another De Vries.
Excuse me, Councilmember Friel's?
Yes.
Sorry, I've got a script here. It's a bad one. Councilmember Jordan? I'm sorry, Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
What are you shaking your head about?
And Mayor Edge?
Yes.
No, 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 let me just say this now, I'm done, and I'm going to miss you guys, and I hope you all the best. Thanks, man.
Thanks, Dan.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the mayor passes unanimously.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask, do I switch places with Leslie now, or do we go into vice mayor?
No, that's Leslie's job. She gets to facilitate the next action.
Does it take about five minutes for Mary and I to switch houses?
Are you walking?
Well, thanks to all, I really appreciate that. Former mayor, thank you so much, and to three councilmen, Asad Flores. I so appreciate the whole thing, the leadership, and I hope I serve effectively well with the help of the entire council, our city manager, our city attorney, and our...
with the help of the entire council, our city manager, our city attorney, and our city clerk. Okay, that's good.
Can I just, wait, 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 because I'm going, I'm now going mayor, I would just like to thank everybody for all of your support. Our city manager, John, and our city attorney, and all of you. Especially Leslie, who has been a great vice mayor. You've all been so great, and it's been an honor for me to be the mayor for one year, and it couldn't have been a better year for me to be vice mayor. It's, I'm being facetious here. But anyway, hopefully it'll be a little bit easier for you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, take it over. Do you have public comment, is that not in there?
I guess, I don't know. Is that?
We have public comment as number three, so we can wait until number three, Leslie, and read it then.
Okay, thank you. At this time now, I'd like to take nominations for the selection of vice mayor.
Madam mayor, I'd like to nominate John Freeman for vice mayor.
There is been a nomination for John Freeman. Do we have a second? Not having a second. I'd like to entertain that motion drops and will enter into motion. Almit motion to nominating Mary Edge as the vice mayor? Is there a second for that? Okay. That motion drops. For failure for a second, do I have a third motion?
I'd like to nominate Cesar Flores for vice mayor.
Do I have a second? I will second that nomination. Then we go to roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Frielz?
Yes.
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Our public comment, sorry.
Thank you all. I'll do the best I can. This point, okay.
Public comment, open to anything in six, three minutes?
Okay.
Nobody's hands are raised. And there are lots of comments, thanking everybody. Welcome back, John. Congratulations to all. Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, on to consent items. Item four, consent items, all matters listed under consent agenda may be enacted by one motion, authorizing actions initiated for those items designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the council. The council for a criticism. Items under consent agenda are opening the act of the open duty agenda, opening the act of the outpost commentary notice. Three minutes, November seventeen, contested. And they created a reference to that resolution about tonight's agenda, now I'm quite all.
I think we're most approved.
And now?
Madam mayor, can I pull C, please? I need to abstain from it, I was not looking for the council.
Are you pulling or abstaining?
I'm abstaining. Just kidding.
Thank you.
All right, roll call vote. We have councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Frielz?
Yes, I'm A D.
Thank you. Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. With councilmember Frielz abstaining from the minutes. Thank you.
Item five, presentations, informal items and reports, public financial statements of office city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. The financial report appears to be in order to me. Most of our expenses are at or below thirty-three percent. And if anything, the community development revenue looks a bit, coming in a little bit high. We have some big expenses on the warrant register, notably Don Chapin for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars wrapping up our Third Street project. And then we have another one, Meritage Homes for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The Meritage Home payment is for the completion of the sewer lateral, the eighteen inch sewer lateral that we hope to connect our sewer extension to Hawthorne Tube. So that was a five hundred thousand dollar expense completed pursuant to the development agreement. And this is the balance after we give credit for the sewer connection fees that they paid. If there are other items on the agenda that the council has questions about on the warrant register or on the expense report, I'm happy to answer questions for you.
Any questions from the council? Mary Edge?
No questions for me, I already asked my questions earlier in the day.
Thank you. John Freeman?
Yes.
Vice mayor, Cesar Flores?
No questions, comments?
Shawna Frielz?
No, thank you.
City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. City manager's report is brief, I don't have a written report for you. Again, a lot of what I've been doing is in your agenda packet, focusing on water. And we have some standing items at the end of our agenda regarding water in the state of emergency, so I can save comments for that until that time. I did have a really good ninety-minute conversation last week with the integrated waste management team, talking about the various programs that we run from using our AB nine sixty-nine recycle money that we get, our franchise agreements revenues are up, which is probably a reflection of homes being occupied in the two newest housing tracts. But with a lot of things that we can do there, especially when school gets back in order and some public outreach and education, and also possibly helping with neighborhood cleanups. It's something I wanted to share. We haven't used free dumpsters for neighborhood cleanups. To that end, our maintenance crew is doing a great job helping the mission remove the pile of brush that we're not able to burn this year. So that's an example of getting a roll-off box and putting it in the neighborhood and having neighborhood cleanup days. We could also do a hazardous waste cleanup. So there are some programs here that we're not taking advantage of that they brought to my attention. I hope to move forward to the council. But in general, I've been focused on water, as you know, and focused on COVID, and that's the way things are for now. And we also have a quick report on urban growth boundary and sphere influence towards the end of our agenda. So with that, if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Just one last piece. We're continuing to improve status reports for our city council. And I've asked both Rich Brown and Liz Turner to come up with a summary of the work that they're doing every month, because we don't capture everything in the software. And so there's a lot of work that they do that you don't see in our I-Works program. An example of that is reaching out to animal control this week and trying to get into a partnership with animal control so that we have better response to both dogs and cats and other domestic animals that need support from them. We hope to bring a contract forward for the council's consideration, where we would pay on a case-by-case basis. So I think that's an example of great progress that we're making in that area. And we hope to get that into a status report for you soon, so that you have it in writing, so that you know what all of our staff is up to. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Mary Edge?
I actually don't have anything, I went over this, but I'm earlier today, so I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Dr. Edge?
No comments to there.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott Frielz?
No, thank you.
Vice mayor, Cesar Flores?
No, no comment. Thank you.
Thank you all. Reports from city council appoint these to regional organizations and committees. Councilmember Edge, do you want to give your report?
Yeah, we had, I went to the seniors council meeting last week, it was a lot of the, and they combined the board and the area agency council. And there's a lot to cover, wide, wide range of topics. Fall prevention, foster grandparents program, which is kind of gone by the wayside because of COVID. ADRC in San Bernardino County, it's starting to come here, and it's going to be a real big talk to homeless families. We went over the budgets for San Bernardino County and San Coors County. And, you know, there were goals that would be set on long-term services and support livable communities and purposes and health and well-being, economic security and safety for the aging. And it was a, it was a real, good, a lot of, a lot of good information for our seniors. We've got more and more seniors that are living much longer. And then the other thing is, is that we have a lot of seniors that are also homeless right now. And so we don't count that many here in San Bernardino County, but they do have a lot in San Antonio. Anyway, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, I had a governor's committee for Central Coast Community Energy. Probably most of you got your energy report in the mail the last week or two. And the notice says zero for fossil fuels and CO2 emissions, so that's what we want. We also, not even correct it, were brought in two more communities into the poll. They're both in Santa Barbara County, so their names are escaping.
Bilton, I think?
What?
Bilton and one other.
Thank you, thank you. And, um, and so that's it, although I have a report right now.
Thank you. Vice mayor, Flores?
I've been attending a lot of webinars on different, different topics, volunteers on water, and I'm trying to figure out a way that we can deal with our problems. I'm just trying to educate myself totally, you know, deep into what avenues we have. Or working with Department of Agriculture, there should be other avenues. I'm not working on that. That's it, thank you.
And I attended the San Bernardino Water Association meeting, it was pretty much a change in regards. They were excited that the city of San Juan Batista is moving in the direction that we're moving with water, wastewater and recent mobilization. And a very short meeting. Okay, item six, public hearings. Consider approval of the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from industrial to public facilities. And zoning map amendment to change land use coming from industrial to public facilities of the city well six. And underlying, underlying zero point seven three acre parcel located at four eighty-five San Juan Close to Road, assessing parcel number zero zero two five five zero 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 nine.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'll introduce David Mack, our planner. And this is a continuation of the last item we had last month. We took care of the Kochs property, and now we're taking care of our rezoning. Thank you, David.
General, I was going to probably hear me and see my slide show, you're right?
Correct.
You're permitted, thank you. So as Don said, it is the city well six rezoned project, similar to what the city council heard for the Koch well. So that's where it's located, the four eighty-five San Juan Close to Road. IP is zero zero two five five zero 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 nine. And the current zoning and land use are industrial. So the project involves the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from industrial to public facilities, so it will function as a city well site, not as a industrial site. And it will have the proper land use designation. And it also changed the zoning map from industrial to public facilities. And the note on the bottom, it says this is the exact opposite action of the Koch rezon project, if you recall that. The project went from public facilities to industrial to make the new Koch property usable. This is the exact opposite, and it will change the industrial property back to public facilities. Just to repressure, in August of two thousand and eighteen, the city did consider an approval land swap to come into compliance order zero two point zero five point one six R point zero zero four, which required the city to be increase and improve the groundwater. These actions on that agreement and compliance order involved purchase of well sevens for city use from Mr. Koch. And underlying point seven three acres of land within Mr. Koch. Now, as applicable to this project, I did want to remind everybody that that agreement included granting of water sewer connections on the well three property for Mr. Koch. Mr. Koch signed the agreement in action, reporting to purchase the former property from the city. Also reported zero point seven three acres in the well three lot. So it was an equal exchange of land and an exchange of parcels. The map before you now shows the prior land use designation in the upper right-hand corner, being industrial or purple. It will change to blue for public facilities to promote that is used by the city to provide a public service. The next map looks remarkably similar, because the land use designation in San Juan Batista is the same. But again, this one is more zoning, the upper right-hand corner shows it was industrial, and it will change to blue for public facilities. Project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, for its extension of one five zero six one two three, known as the common sense exemption. And the reason that it qualifies for that is it does involve the exchange of plans and the replus of zoning and land use change will not result in increased industrial or public facilities of properties, again, because this is the opposite action of Koch property. If we only done one, this finding couldn't be made. But again, the Koch block well three was reviewed by the planning permission on November second, twenty twenty. It was subsequently approved by the city council on the good receipt. So this is just to tie the cities. With that, Scott does recommend that the city council take immediate actions, adopt a resolution to change the land use designation of well six from industrial to public facilities, and adopt a resolution to change the building designation of the well sevens property from industrial to public facilities. But I may adopt an ordinance to change the building map of the industrial or public facilities from well six to parcel. And this would be the introduction and first reading of that ordinance. And with that, I am available for questions, should be council that.
Uh, I'd like to open this up to your self comment at this time. And see no hand raised or anything in the chats. Uh, I'd like to close the public comment and go to discussion by the council. Uh, Councilmember Edg.
I have, I, I really have no questions or comments.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, I do have a few comments. Uh, first of all, I am in support completely of doing this transaction or, of zoning change. But I also have to remind everybody that well six is now offline. Um, it was not a good deal for the city. The water no longer meets specs. And this is one of the reasons why in January 2017, I asked for a complete master water plan for the city and of course it took two and a half, three years to even start it. And in the meanwhile, we bought a well that no longer suitable for potable water. So I just, uh, if we do things too quickly, uh, we may lose things. It's a lottery market. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman, uh, sorry, Friel.
Uh, no, I didn't have no questions. I've, I had the, the pleasure of seeing this on the planning commission at Ozzy. So thank you. And thank you, David, for all your work on it.
Vice Mayor Flores.
No comments.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, you forgot Mary. Mary, did Mary have something?
Yes.
I'll serve her.
Page there. Can I get a roll call? Yes. Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Friel.
Yes.
Councilmember Edg.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. And that's resolution 68. Thank you. Uh, next up is to approve the resolution 20269, adopting an ordinance limiting the city of San Juan Batista zoning map, rezoning the well six property located at 485 San Juan Hollister Road, uh, from industrial to public facilities. Is there any public comment? Seeing no hand raised or chats, I'm closing public comment. Any discussion by the council? Uh, Councilman Edg.
No.
Councilman Freeman.
No.
Uh, Councilman Friel.
No thank you.
Like, Flores.
No comment.
She isn't here.
Uh, I will now entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution 20269, adopting an ordinance limiting the city of San Juan Batista zoning map, rezoning the well six property located at 485 San Juan Hollister Road, APN number 002-550-609, from industrial to public utilities.
I will second it.
Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Friel.
Yes.
Councilmember Edg.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. Uh, now I'd like to introduce an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district from industrial to public facilities for parcel 0.73 acres located at 485 San Juan Hollister Road, APN 002-550-009. Uh, I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing no hand raised or any chats, I'm going to close the public comment. Uh, discussion by the council. Councilmember Edg.
No, no discussion, no questions.
Councilmember Freeman.
No thank you.
Councilmember Friel.
No thank you.
Vice Mayor Flores.
No thank you.
Uh, any action, uh, motion to introduce the ordinance of the thing, does only have change?
No.
A second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Coming.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Friel.
Yes.
Councilmember Edg.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. Uh, okay, action items, most elected ad hoc committee to approve for the planning commissioners, uh, staffed or by city manager ballots.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, a few months ago, I think, uh, November, October, the city council received a policy, draft policy from the city attorney suggesting a different way to select, uh, our planning commissioners, a way where we, uh, solicit, uh, and advertise and recruit for applicants for the planning commission. And, uh, after having done that for several weeks or a month, we have, uh, a committee appointed by the, uh, city council of, of two city council members to review those applications and return to the council with two recommended, uh, future commissioning members. So at this point, we have been advertising for some time. I, uh, will report that formally, we have received no, uh, applications yet. We followed up with a couple inquiries this week, sending applications to two different people. So we're hoping we can get more, uh, more applicants for our planning commissioners. So I encourage everyone to recruit. We have 34 people on this call. That means that maybe 20 of them would want to be planning commissioners, yeah. Uh, so, uh, tonight, we're asking, uh, the city council to consider two appointees to that ad hoc committee so that when we do get a sufficient amount of applicants, we can come back to the council, hopefully January 19th, with a recommendation for two new planning commissioners. So having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions and, and, uh, city attorney is also standing by.
Uh, how many, how many did we look for?
Two.
Would like to be on that committee?
Just, just the two, sorry.
So we only need two applications? We're not ready for, for anymore at some time when we reach two of the committee?
Um, I was hoping we'd get 10 or so.
Me too, yeah.
Um, yeah, in, in time, in time for our council meeting in January 19th. So we can create a cutoff, say, uh, January 10th and, uh, and, and see what we have at that point and, and convene the committee.
Flyers, remember.
Yeah, the flyers should be in your packet.
Supposed to.
And supposed to, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, is this not going to open up to public comment now? All you public out there, if you want to join. And no hand raised or chats. I'm going to close public comments, uh, open up the discussion by the council. Uh, Councilmember Edg.
I would like to be on that committee.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Freeman.
I was going to have Nick Scott be on that committee since he was planning commissioner chair. No, I'll, I'll.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Friel.
Uh, I was hoping to stay on the ad hoc for the urban growth and, uh, and, uh, sphere of influence, so I, I'd like to stick with that one for right now.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Flores.
Is there, no, he's there.
Mayor's first and most is.
Oh, I'll, I'll be all right.
Okay, I guess we have our committee. Thank you very much.
So, th- thank you, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Edg and Vice Mayor Chris Morris will be our ad hoc for interviews.
Thank you. Well done, okay.
Discussion items, item eight, city treasurer appointment process update. City manager.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, we have posted and advertised this position as well. Uh, we do have one interested member, that would be our, uh, our prior city treasurer. Uh, we're twisting his arm to complete an application, so we have someone to present as soon as we can. So, uh, uh, he is now retired, he's a little harder to catch than he used to be. So, um, uh, we'll, we'll track down Chuck Geiger and see if we can get him to complete an application for your consideration. Of course, anyone who would like to be city treasurer is free to apply. And again, I think January 10th is a good cutoff date so we can bring someone forward to the city council, January 19th.
Uh, thank you, public comments on our treasurer.
I've seen that.
Seeing no public comment on that or any hand raised. I'm going to close public comments and discussion by, uh, city council. Uh, sorry, uh, Councilmember Edg.
Uh, no comment, no questions.
Councilmember Freeman.
No comment.
Councilmember Friel.
No comment.
Vice Mayor Chris Morris.
No comment.
Uh, one of the questions was asked is what's the commitment in hours for the treasurer?
So, um, the commitment is rather, it, it's, it's not a big commitment. It's to help, uh, prepare and review the treasurer's report that comes to the council every month. And then, uh, soon we'll be coming out with the audit, so it's a second set of eyes just to review the audit to see if there are any findings or, or, uh, active corrections that the city should do, um, to make the next audit better. Um, and then, of course, review the draft budget as, as we move forward. So there's just a, a few periodic reviews of big reports like that, and then the monthly treasurer's report. We prepare that, um, and it's a chance to have a question and answer staff before the council sees it. So it's just a quick review, maybe a couple hours a month on most cases.
Very, thank you very much. Uh, AB, Urban Grove Boundaries, Sphere of Influence, Ad hoc Committee Status Report.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, we, uh, we selected January 11th to be our next meeting date, not knowing if we would have, uh, a, a different makeup than, than what we are today with a large member of Jackie Morse Lopez. Um, uh, but with the new planning commissioners coming on board, uh, we could either meet with a vacancy or, or we could, uh, uh, meet as we were or postpone that January 11th meeting. So I'll have to have that conversation with, uh, with the committee members moving forward. We may bump that out till sometime after the 19th. Uh, in the meantime, I, I am due with, with a draft letter to the property owners surrounding our, our, uh, political boundaries, uh, to advise them and inform them of, of what, uh, we are considering as, as we move forward with the, uh, with the, the idea of the, uh, sphere of influence. Been working closely with, uh, LAFCO, and, uh, they have reminded us of the need to provide a, a current municipal services report, which will describe our ability to provide utilities outside of our boundary. And I've asked Marty Brown to work on that for us, um, and as you saw in her status report a couple weeks ago. Um, having said that, um, we, I, we were pleased, I think, to find, uh, the, the large 50 acre plus, uh, property to the west of our city, going through the process last week, uh, to become an, an ag, to part of the ag trust. And that's great. That means I'll preserve those hillsides as people come down from Highway 101 into our community and always be the, the beautiful pastoral, uh, property set aside. So that was great to know, uh, it's happening on its own. Uh, so with that, um, I'm going to be sending, uh, maps out just to verify with each of the committee members that I have the, the coordinates correct on the, uh, sphere of influence maps, and then I'll include that in my letter and I'll get that out to the community and be sure and copy to the city council. So that's really not a lot of new news, just kind of a reminder of where we're at as we wait for the, the planning commissioner, uh, to be decided and, and the ultimate, uh, resolve of the new body if we have one. It, it could stay the same, who knows? So just throwing that out there and happy to ask, answering any questions that people may have about this project in particular. Side of AB.
Uh, any public comment on this?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember, discussion? Uh, Councilmember Edg.
No, no comment, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
No, I have no comment.
Councilmember Friel.
Uh, yeah, like I said before, I'd, I'd like to stay on this ad hoc. I'm, I started doing a lot of work and since I left the planning mission and Deanna Fries left the city council, I was hoping to maybe, um, fill in his spot, uh, if that's possible. Just waiting for somebody to have to start from scratch on this. This is kind of difficult for, um, Councilman Edg to, to take to that extent.
Yeah, and, and I agree, Scott, uh, Councilman Friel, I, I, I feel that you shouldn't stay, you know, that you should hold that position still since, um, you know, Councilman DeRais has gotten, you know, and so we still need you and there is a lot of work and it's, it's too much for somebody to catch up on. So, um, yeah, I, I would suggest that we as a body keep you on.
I agree, that seems like a decent transition. Uh, Vice Mayor Flores.
Yeah, do we need a motion for that? Actually, I'll make the motion for Scott to stay on that, uh, that ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Do not need a motion, uh, for that, uh, and if everybody prefers though, um...
So noted.
I'm sorry, one more time?
So noted, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Welcome to staying on.
Thank you.
Um, there is one question, uh, from, maybe you're there. Uh, can you clarify the ag trust property to the west of town?
It's, 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 uh, known as Nylend Ranch, and it's the properties between Rock Road and, and, uh, on, on the, uh, south side of 156, west of, uh, west of, uh, our, our city reservoir and, and Lang Street, all that. From the reservoir to Rock Road, that, that whole, more than 50 acres. I know one parcel's 50 acres and, and the other's about 40 acres. So I, I have that staff report and I can, and I can, and I can provide that to, to, to bond that.
Uh, I, I think it was just a clarification.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it was just a clarification, right? The historical society has been working on, um, working with this far out. Um, okay, AC, Coke for 19, update?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Jordan.
And?
Um, we, uh, we received, uh, those of us who were able to turn in to the board of supervisors, we, uh, were introduced to the new, uh, deputy public health officer, Dr. Gillik, in support of Dr. Giorucci. Um, it's great to have him at this time because, uh, as we know, the, the numbers in our county are, are not improving yet. Um, that, so we had two deaths just yesterday. Um, uh, we then, there was conversation about testing and, and how the optimum service is, is maxed out, uh, but you can still get appointments and if you get a, a, a no on your appointment request, it just means that that time slot is filled. So please try again. Uh, the optimum service is still working out of the Hollister Veterans Hall. Um, there, there, there was a lot of conversation at the board of supervisors about the cost of the, uh, of the tests and some of the private, the hospitals are charging. If you go to the... charging. If you go to the ER, they're gonna charge you for an ER visit as well as, as a shop, so it could be more than a hundred dollars. And the board wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, so I'll share that with you. Um, and we are still in a, uh, we, we've got a good presentation from the CEO of Hazel Hawkins Hospital, uh, this morning, from, from Steve Hannah, um, and making sure that everyone understood that we're under siege initiative now, and, uh, that, that we're doing everything we can to handle this surge as it comes forward, and space, uh, and staffing are, are two limitations we have, living up to our, our beds for the COVID cases. If they're staying sick longer, so they're in the beds longer, they're occupying the beds longer. That's, that's the trend right now. Um, uh, homeless services is starting to see a few cases in the shelter in Hollister, nine to ten cases in the past few weeks, and that's, and that's the, the status on that end of the spectrum. On the vaccine status, um, the county expects to receive two hundred and thirty doses, uh, by the end of this week, we hope, uh, by Thursday. They would be dedicated to our frontline staff, mostly at, at Hazel Hawkins Hospital in the ER. Um, and it is unknown when, uh, these, uh, these vaccinations will be available to the general public. Um, contact tracing is, is something that, uh, that we've been hard to stay abreast with. We used to be able to trace every single case, and so we, we are, we are working hard to, to register that staff up in our public house. So, um, with that, um, I just wanted to share with the council, um, I listed in on a, on a workshop, a convening Sunday with a group in Monterey County, uh, representing migrant farm population. You know, eighty percent of, uh, those with COVID are Latino, uh, in our county, and, uh, Monterey County is seeing similar, where fifty-nine percent of the county are Latino, but seventy-nine percent have COVID. And it was described in this workshop how, uh, those seventy-nine percent of the cases occur from East Salinas to, uh, King City. And so, this is the farm working communities, um, and they had, uh, really incredible stories from farm worker families and the struggles that they go through. I, I shared this with some of the council earlier today. And the COPA brought forward a plan for Monterey County to consider, where when the person finds out that they have tested positive, a better way to personally intervene and, and provide that person with housing separate from their, from their normal housing situation, which may, of course, be overcrowded or impacted. So, um, it's an interesting thing to watch. If any of you are familiar with the good work of COPA, I think that's ultimately gonna be the best way our county can keep our numbers down, is to focus on those most vulnerable communities. So, I know we focused a lot on our businesses and, and other issues tonight and other nights, uh, but as a region, as a county, we need to think of our farm workers, the work, the good work that our council does with LULAC, and, uh, see what we can do to, to help them, uh, stay safe during these times. So, I just wanted to share that presentation with you. The acronym is C O P A. Uh, it was the executive director there for a long time, was Anna Camiero's, uh, husband, Juan. And, uh, and with that, I have spoken with, uh, the senator's office about COVID, um, explaining to her how hard it is to encourage people to build apartments and tell them they can't use it. I invited Senator Camiero's office to listen in to the board of supervisors and to our city council discussion today. I hope they were able to do that. They are very, uh, interested in our response to COVID and the problems we're facing. And this is the, right at the key issue right here, I think this is the key issue of, uh, of getting our businesses open, uh, at, at, and keeping our community safe at the same time. It's, it's been a real challenge. Um, but we'll continue to work on it, continue to work. At our business forum, uh, we had a good conversation on the subcommittee this week, uh, couns-, um, Councilman Mayor Jordan was part of that conversation, uh, talking about, uh, a permanent parkland program and what that would entail. And I'll be asking, uh, David Mack and, and Deb Moll, our city attorney, to start working, uh, in January on a plan to make those permanent, uh, amendments to our historic design guidelines and our ordinances, uh, with the help of the historical society, reaching out and getting the historical society represented on the subcommittee to talk about parklets becoming permanent. And then David can help us with the CEQA aspects, traffic studies, and other things that are needed. And then, of course, we need a budget. We don't have a budget for Third Street. We, we don't necessarily have a budget. We've been, we've been trying to rely on, on federal support during the COVID crisis, and it just hasn't happened. Um, and so, as you noted in a slide earlier tonight that I presented, we've, we've spent about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and we've only received fifty thousand from the federal government in response to our COVID response. But with that, the hard work of our community liaison is paid off, and especially during these challenging times, really helping us keep the message straight, working with our, uh, with Rochelle and our, and our, uh, our social media to get the message straight so that everybody has the same story. Because once we all get on the same page, uh, it's easier and more efficient to move forward. So, I appreciate people's patience and cooperation, and it's been a super tough two weeks for everyone in every different way. So, I just wanted to recognize that, um, this thing is, is not slowing down yet, and it's up to all of us to do our part. So, that's all I had to say about COVID. If there are any questions from the council, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm gonna open it up to public comments. Uh, no hand trays. And one chat from Rory twenty-five, purpose of our future, quality development. Uh, thank you, Rory twenty-five. Uh, discussion from the council, to councilmember Edge?
Um, I, you know, I really don't have much to say that I, I already didn't say, um, you know, I, I'm caring for our, our community and, and what is happening. And, um, no, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing right, working, uh, you know, we're under mandate, state mandate. I don't want to jeopardize our, uh, our funding, uh, possibilities for funding. And, um, if we do open our parklets without, or not parklets, like businesses without, uh, the proper points and the proper channels, I'm afraid we may have options. And so, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing right, and, um, I just want everybody to know that, that, you know, and I think all of us feel the same way. Um, our community, we wouldn't live here all these years if we didn't go, you know, and we couldn't get involved the way we're involved, uh, if we didn't, uh, and so, I think we have to, you know, be patient, take a step back, and really think these out well, and move, uh, move with a, uh, educated, uh, way. Um, that's all I have to say.
And you, Councilmember Freeman?
Um, I'm, it's kind of like, well, I'm, I think, very, um, well, the, the, the heard, heard the, the meeting earlier, uh, this afternoon, um, I, I made a, a, a motion to, uh, well, the reason why I did that is because both the cities of Hollister and San Juan are in agreement that more enforcement, my motion was for more enforcement. It was kind of poorly articulated by me, but it was for more enforcement, particularly on maps. Uh, I mean, that's because that's what, there is scientific studies that show that masking does really cut down, uh, COVID spread. So, I was trying to pick it back on Dan's motion to do that. Uh, and, and City Hollister is pointing to the same thing. It is the county that is the ally, uh, that they are very, let's just say, hands on, uh, and especially in terms of enforcement. And our enforcement is the county, for the most part. I, I, I know Rich Brown and Liz worked very, very hard, but, you know, it is, it is the sheriff that has the authority to do the rest, except for me. So, I just kind of wanted to explain my, my purpose, uh, I am in favor of, of actually going slow and, and, you know, but we, we need our businesses to, so I'm trying to balance it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck, Councilman Friel's?
Uh, I, I missed the, Tom, how many, Tom, how many vaccines are, are given to the county?
Two hundred and thirty dedicated to Hazel Hawkins.
I'm sorry, I had two people tell me, uh, I'm sorry.
I, my notes reflect two hundred and thirty going to Hazel Hawkins.
Only two hundred and thirty?
So, the first phase is for the emergency responders, and then, uh, the second phase will be for assisted living, I believe, following the CDC protocol and the state's protocol.
Yeah, okay, I understand that, yeah. And, and all I can say is to say, you gotta hang in there. Um, I've heard say that, you know, tens of thousands, or tens of millions of vaccines are gonna be out here by the end of the year, so, um, it's sounding good. And, um, uh, I know it's scary, but we can survive this. We're tough enough to do it, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gonzalez?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, you know, picking back on what Tom said, uh, it's not that I don't want businesses, you know, to, to make money and all that. I'm really worried about, you know, uh, the virus, and how it's just so contagious, people to die in that , right? You know, and, uh, that's basically what I'm focused on. And, uh, and I'm sorry that those people are losing a lot of money, and we know that, but it's, it's out of our hands. We, the state had to get it in control, or the whole nation had to get it in control. We're just, you know, going down the dark alley here. Anyway, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, with the, the permanent parkland ad hoc committee, uh, as, as Rory twenty-five has stated, ninety-nine point, ninety-nine percent of the businesses that built parks did it responsibly and with very low guidance. So, this ad hoc committee was put together, and it's from the, uh, Business Ad hoc Committee that's on Wednesday for merchants and, uh, hospitality alike, uh, a group is coming together, and we'd like to see somebody from the historic society on that as well, uh, to work on, on finalizing permanent parkland guidelines and, uh, and get something in by, uh, our March meeting. Uh, we're bringing it back in March as a, uh, as an agenda item, uh, for, uh, for comments and, um, and to, or not to forward. So, if they will be prepared to forward, um, if that's the way that the national mission and the stewardship were handed to the council, those, uh, focuses, and, and in anticipation of, uh, permanent safety. Um, and I apologize for trying to do a couple things at the same time. Jackie had put against Tom, and I missed it, uh, because of the comment for COVID nineteen, uh, I think, so, my, I think Jackie or Jackie, so, uh, no, you can, yes.
Okay, uh, we do want to get Mayor, um, Jordan, congratulations. So, as far as COVID nineteen, you know, I've sit through these council meetings, and it almost seems like this is like an afterthought of your, your agendas. It doesn't, for me, as a community member and a healthcare provider, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of focus or importance to put on it. Um, you know, I know that these are trying times, you have city business, you have other issues that you're doing, but, you know, it always seems like it's a little bit sinister to the end of your agenda. And I, I never really hear anything that I want to hear as a community member and a healthcare provider to keep my community safe, um, and keep our businesses safe, you know. Like I spoke before, you know, we're two weeks left into the three week mandate. I'm wondering if we could have a little bit more solid information when we bring up the COVID nineteen, like, what's going on in our community? Is there someone at the meeting doing some outbreak? We have a lot of seniors who don't drive or get around. Is there talk about maybe, um, some testing going on, you know? Because tests are still very much a part of COVID nineteen, getting people busted. You know, I'd like to, to hear some sort of alley-oop or some sort of talk around that, and I just really put some more focus on COVID nineteen. You know, we're a small community, but more importantly, we're a tourist town. We have a lot of people coming from other states, other cities, other towns, and, and we're at risk. Our small business owners are at risk. We want to protect them, we want to keep them open. We don't want them to fall ill to this, or, uh, virus. So, please put some more focus and thought high COVID when we bring it on the agenda. We'd like to see it pushed up. Have a little bit more importance, talk about maybe some community testing, reaching out to our community members or seniors and our Spanish speaking community members, as Dawn said, over King City. So, yes, those numbers are high. Um, I have to give results out weekly to farm workers that are still working, trying to hook them on the table, um, you know, they live in, uh, lots of small towns than we do out here, so it's a challenge. Okay? Thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you. Um, if I may, Mayor Jordan?
Absolutely.
Uh, Jackie, just to let you know, uh, both Cesar and I are involved with Rubenac, and, um, we have been very closely involved with keeping up with farm workers, the Spanish speaking community. Uh, and then also, um, I stay in contact with, uh, Pauline Paltevia, uh, the director for openness, the, and, and in fact, I just talked to her, uh, last week, and she, they, they bring food to the seniors that can't go anywhere. And I have, um, a list of seniors and farm workers that I stay in touch with, um, just to make sure they're okay, and then also to let them know that we have food, you know, for them, how we get, I don't know, food distribution. I'm gonna touch on that a little bit later. But I just wanted to let you know that, that, uh, Cesar and I, who, uh, you know, stay in touch with, uh, with the, uh, farm workers. And Cesar, I don't know if you want to say anything regarding that?
Well, it's a name, it's, it's a farm workers task force. We were actually approached by a representative from the farm workers, and, uh, took it on, and it was only a handful of us, uh, and we were able to raise nice amount of money in three weeks. Uh, all that went, you know, went to the farm workers. We bought clothes for them, we bought socks, we bought, in fact, masks, we, we, just trying to keep them healthy. Those people, they don't have any, any, any choice. They don't have an option. They either go and work really hard, or both of them got black kids. We're doing something.
Uh, what are the, the manager?
Sure. Um, I, I shared with the, the council, uh, a giant Gantt chart that prompts our course forward through the end of June. And when I tried to print it out, it, it covered an entire wall. So, we have, um, four different categories that we shared with the EPA moving forward. That's the preparation of a financial plan. And, uh, to prepare a financial plan to fund a project, um, there are special, uh, finance trained professionals, CPAs, that are trained in municipal finance, and they get a certification and accreditation. They're known as municipal advisors. So, I have a proposal I'd like to bring forward to the council for a firm called California Municipal Advisors. And this particular firm works closely with, uh, Cameron Weiss and the Weiss Law Group, that helped the city refinance its bonds back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, they come highly recommended. And, uh, I look forward to working with the, the financial consultant. So, identify our, our debt capacity and compare it to the rate study that's underway right now, and to, to look at our current enterprise funds as we did, um, last February, and, and to just make sure that, that we have the fiscal capability of plotting a course forward. So, um, that's, that's the first element in the plan that I described to the EPA, getting them under contract, uh, getting, uh, the three grants that we've applied for now. We've applied for the USDA grants, uh, and we need to give them our, uh, draft audit report, which just came in this week. We need to give them our draft rate study, which I'm in a meeting with tomorrow, so I hope to receive the draft rate study from our Wells tomorrow. Uh, those are key elements for the USDA. Um, the, uh, the water board, we submitted two different grants to them, uh, last week, Carl Bajarki did for us, uh, one for the sewer project and one for the water project. I also have a draft agreement, uh, pardon me, uh, moving on to, uh, the second, uh, item that the EPA is interested in, and that is developing a capital improvement, uh, uh, plan for the, uh, uh, two water projects. uh, two water projects. And those are coming together independently as we have grant applications for the Water Enterprise Fund and for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. But that CIT will be ready, uh, in the, in the spring and then become part of our twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. Uh, so we hope to have, uh, those two items completed, uh, on the front end because the other two items, of course, are the sewer project itself and the water project itself. So right now, some of the moving parts with our water project, uh, we are in receipt of a draft agreement from the San Benito Water District and also a technical, uh, uh, plan, uh, to design the, the, the pipeline coming from the West Hills, uh, Water District, uh, facility to, to our, our incorporated boundaries. So that's really great progress and, and the, the general manager, Jeff Catano, whom you all met, is anxious to get started on that. So I'm glad to see that draft reported and I hope to meet with our water subcommittee, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, uh, maybe even, if it's possible, later this week to talk about those two agreements. So, um, um, moving forward with the sewer project, uh, one of the biggest concerns, of course, the guarantee we need first and foremost is with the city of Hollister. And we had agreed informally, uh, to, to make a presentation about our water project at their second meeting in December and that deadline had, had come and gone. So they are meeting on the twenty-first, uh, next Monday and last week when I made inquiry, I was told I was too late. Uh, that's unfortunate because before we issue any contracts on the sewer project, we want to make sure that the Hollister City Council, the newly seated Hollister City Council is on board with us. I know the, the, the prior mayor, uh, Edge, had spoken with, uh, the, the mayor in Hollister and we seem to have, uh, a lot of positive support, but we need to work towards formalizing an agreement with them. But to that end, uh, very excited to report that we're out for a request for proposals right now that will design that, that line, that sewer line, um, and will, uh, uh, do the environmental work and, and, and the permitting and so forth. It's hopeful that we would be a thirty percent to forty percent design by June because the USDA loan and grant programs would become available in late June or July. So the timing there would be perfect and that's the way all the different pieces around water are coming together. But we have plenty of agreements to execute and plenty of policy to write between now and then. And so those are all the, the different things that I'm working on. I also had a lengthy conversation with LAPCO concerning our industrial users and, uh, not getting very clear feedback at this point, so I hope to follow up by the end of this week to identify exactly where we are with all three of our industrial users so I can begin to contact them and initiate some form of awareness and enforcement. Uh, that'll go a long way, uh, towards our, towards our compliance. So with that, um, I've been talking to the water board about the DACH status, but we're in negotiations now, so I have to leave that on a confidential, uh, level right now. But, uh, so anyway, a lot of things going on in that area. Uh, it's a big, busy project right now and, uh, and, uh, we're up for the task, we're going to get it done. So, um, if anyone has any questions about any of those pieces or would like to have a four-hour meeting with me, uh, let's get together and watch out about it. There you go.
Uh, any public comments, uh, sorry, or, are you finished?
Yes, I'm done. I, I'm done. I'm cooked.
Uh, color comment? Do you have any? Any raised hands? There's a sprinkle of vaccine.
Sandy raised.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember comments? Uh, councilmember Edge?
No, no questions. Uh, the only comment I have is, thank you so much for your hard work. Uh, you know, this water situation has been a, an ongoing thing and, uh, you know, it's, uh, and it seems sometimes that we're going in slow motion, but at the same time, you've been a lot of farmers for us, so thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Freeman?
No, no more questions.
Councilmember Freeman?
I just have a quick question for city manager. Um, Dawn, when it comes down to just the water project alone, how many government agencies, county, state, federal, are you dealing with?
Um, the water, the water district has stepped up, councilmember, um, and that's a relief. Um, they got, the, the general manager was able to get, uh, their board to, uh, support him in his effort to work with San Juan Batista and they have a dedicated member, two members of their board, um, uh, focused on San, San Juan Batista water. And we had a very productive meeting with, uh, Mayor Jordan and Councilmember Freeman and their, and their, uh, subcommittee out at the district office, uh, safely spaced out. Um, and, um, from that meeting came the draft agreement that I received just last week. So they want to own the pipe between the, uh, the West Hills plants and our incorporated boundary of Mission Vineyard Road. And, and so they will take control, they will design it, they will build it, they will use their easements, uh, uh, so they, they have control of that and that's a relief. It allows us to focus on our, on our wastewater treatment plant while they're focusing on the water. So they're a super important partner right now. And what's coming down essentially is, Scott, just so you understand, they're selling bonds for a, a number of different projects that they're working on. So they've been hustling to work with us so that they can wrap our nine million dollar project, probably closer to four and a half million dollars by the time it gets built, um, into their bond issuance. So, uh, they're going to help finance our project and then be able to disperse, uh, those payments over, uh, twenty-five, thirty years, uh, to reduce the impact on our rate payers. So, um, in that way, uh, we're fortunate to have them as a willing partner and I, and I, and I just, um, feel very positive working with Jeff Catano, the general manager, and with our committee. Uh, we've made some great progress in the past couple months. So that's kind of the water project in, in summary.
Oh, great. Now, that's good news. I mean, I, I know there, there has to be a massive alphabet soup mixed in their summary of agencies. They're taking the lead and then it takes it off the list.
Exactly.
Takes it off you, that's fantastic.
Yes, that's fantastic, yeah.
Uh, Vice Mayor Flores?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, city councilmember, uh, file comments? Uh, councilmember Edge?
Okay, uh, I just have a couple, um, just to remind everybody that we're still doing the food distribution and we moved the location to the community center and, um, we are going to be out there Friday from twelve until about one, one thirty, whenever we bring out food. And, um, so, and believe it, Christmas is going to be in a week, so we won't be there on, uh, the twenty-fifth, but we will be there on the twenty-eighth of December. Uh, we're going to have a special, uh, distribution, if that's a Monday, uh, same time. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, uh, the, the victims from the Rintisport, uh, fire, uh, I just need to remind, uh, Dan DeRees, John Freeman and, uh, our mayor, uh, Leslie Jordan, uh, all three of you to, to adopt or take the children. I had fists that coincided with the children and they have Santa lists, you know, what they want for, for Christmas. I don't, I, it's up to you what you want to get them, but I'd like to be able to give them the, the items by Monday. Um, and I want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Colin Cusman, because he's the one that started all of this. Um, he, he, uh, got a, uh, opened a, a fund account for the, the family. Uh, and then just to tell you briefly, the, the father is a single dad and he'd only been here, uh, four months, uh, before this fire and he was, uh, uh, you know, just really devastated in, in the loss, of course, the time of the year and then on top of that it's COVID. So, um, he's been very grateful. Uh, I met him, uh, Friday, last Friday and, um, I just, you know, wanted to just remind everybody, um, you know, if you're interested in, in, uh, giving the children any, uh, items, uh, toys or anything like that, uh, you can get up in touch with me. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you for sharing that. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, councilmember Freeman?
I'm not, I'm going to thank them.
Councilmember Freeman?
Um, yes, thank you, Seth. Just a few things, um, I want to start with, I thank you, my wife, Shauna, for, uh, sticking with me through the, through the election and, uh, and supporting me and, uh, helping with a lot of guidance. I really appreciate, uh, her help and, uh, looking forward to more guidance from her in the future. Uh, I'd also like to thank the over five hundred residents in this town that voted for me. Uh, I have to tell you, that was extremely humbling. And have people stop, as I, I go on walks every morning, sometimes in the afternoon, just have people stop, tell me they're voting for me. And, uh, it's, it's a humbling, very humbling experience, so I appreciate it. We are all sitting in, in council that was, uh, you know, that had past members that were pretty incredible people and, um, it's, 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 uh, I'm, I'm over the line. And then back to the fire situation, um, the Hollister fire did a heck of a job.
Oh, yes.
They, they did a heck of a job of, uh, you know, there's three people on that first rig and they, their second rig is ten, twelve minutes out if it's not committed, so, uh, they, they helped them on those. I appreciate the hard work and, uh, and I'm looking forward to the next four years and don't move to Tennessee or something. I'm applying. Johnson City's looking pretty good these days. Uh, but, um, thank you, appreciate it.
And, and just a, a quick note to add to Scott's comments, the first rig that came was, although it's close to the fire department, it was our, it was our big. Uh, and thank you to all of them, buying along with several other houses, which is fair. They did a phenomenal job, great response time and the other three agencies, including Hollister, did a phenomenal job, good coordination was around, uh, they only lost one complex. Uh, Vice Mayor Flores, any final comments?
No comments, thank you.
Uh, and again, I just want to thank, uh, former Mayor Edge, uh, for your service and , uh, and your help. It's a pleasure working with you. Thanks. And that's all I have. City manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank, uh, Mary Edge as well. Um, my gosh, uh, I don't know how many meetings we've had, I lost count, but, um, definitely, I think she was mayor for two terms and twelve months. It was like we met so many times and she and I spend a lot of time together trying to figure stuff out and just not easy. And then on top of that, you have your own philanthropic project, so Mary, it's been great working with you this past year. Thank you for your support. Um, and just, uh, if, if you ever see anything on social media that doesn't sound quite right, please give me a call. Um, we have a few six-figure consultants that are using state money to do planning grants. Uh, so I just, if, if they, if you ever see something that just doesn't hit you right, just, just give me a call and, and we'll get to the bottom of it sooner than later. So appreciate everyone's support and have a great holiday, uh, between now and New Year's. Uh, I'm going to be in and out for the next couple weeks, so thank you very much. I just wanted to say, happy holidays.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very cool.
Just happy holidays, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Same to you, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Santa, everything. Air hooks. Sticks your heart. Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. This meeting, uh, is adjourned.
I will be adjourned in the meeting.
Okay, now I sit and get in.
I'll pay you.
Aye.